All right, now let me go through that one real slow because there's... I hear you. I hear you. Let me go through it real slow. How many peo... Okay, all I'm doing is asking questions so far, all right? Let me ask you this one: How many people want to see individual income tax rate reductions for you in the room? How many people want to see tax increases to fund more programs? All right? All right, now here it gets tougher: How many people want to see corporate tax rate reductions? How many people want to see corporate rate increases? All right, I got a second. All right? All right, everybody asks for town halls so we can have civil discourse, and so that's what we're trying to do. I'm trying to listen to the people right now on the key issues of our day. Okay, if we go this route, it's going to be very hard to have rational civil discourse all night. All right? I'm trying my best here. Here we go. These are the real choices that are coming down the pike, so I'm trying to lay them out for you. How many people in the room want to see more federal government deregulation? How many people want to see more federal government regulation? All right, good. All right, so we got a clear sense of room. All right. Let me lay out, all right, I'm gonna take... I'll let you can all yell, and I'll just wait till we got quiet, and then I'll go into my introductory remarks.
Okay, when everyone's quiet, we'll begin with the questions. I'm gonna take... Where are the questions?
Actually, I'm gonna first of all cover the healthcare bill for a few minutes, and then we'll get into the questions, and so if you can all maintain civil attention for a minute, I'm gonna try to lay out the federal healthcare bill, and then we'll have a discussion of it, and I'll take as many questions as you want, we'll try to answer everything. It's very clear, right, there's a disproportionate number of Democrats in the room, so that's good. You're all my constituents. I want to represent all of you, and we'll get to it. All right? So let's go over the big issue in the room, and I just want to read you, I brought it with, just so we can make sure we get it straight, and the press corps can help us with this. I'm gonna read from the bill. So this is the main issue that's under contention tonight, and I just want to share with you.
I'm sorry, Dave, hold on one second. I'm sorry, hold on one second. Please, I'm asking you now, please let Congressman Brat... It will stop. I will let Congressman Brat speak and be respectful. Thank you. Okay, I would like security to go ahead and come up to the middle doors here. You may do this at other people's town halls, but you're not doing it mine.
All right, let's try it again. Let me read everybody's...
Okay, if I were you, I would be quiet, or you will politely be escorted out. This is my town hall now, so sit down.
That's all right, we'll go, we'll keep going. Let me read it, and we'll see how we do.
All right, be quiet. I'm at a respectful town hall, well, everybody will be heard, but nobody can be heard when you're not quiet. You will have an opportunity to speak at the right time.
All right, here we go.
You are talking disrespectfully to me, so you can stop. Thank you, Congressman Brat.
All right, here we go. Let me read Section 137b of the bill. "No limiting access to coverage for individuals with pre-existing conditions." Nothing in this act, meaning the entire bill, this is straight quote out of the bill, "Nothing in this act shall be construed as permitting health insurance issuers to limit access to health coverage for individuals with pre-existing conditions." All right, saying, I want to put this up, so everyone can take a picture, so the press can take a picture. There's been some massive misinformation on this point, and that's why I wanted to come out and do a town hall, to share with you the facts, right? So everyone wants to be conscious of science, et cetera. I forgot to add in my preliminary remarks, I was gonna go over on the Bay funding, some of you have written articles in the paper, I'm gonna be in favor of the Bay funding coming out, et cetera. The science says that's the right thing to do. This isn't even science, this is just fact, this is what the bill actually says. So pre-existing conditions are covered. Now let me go over in detail with you how this works out. So pre-existing conditions are in Obamacare. Nothing in the current bill changes that regulation. So number one, that law stays current law. Number two, there are some folks in the room that have issues with states being able to opt out of some of the regulations. Let me address that very carefully and slowly with you, and I'll take any questions you have on any of this.
I'm sorry, Congressman Brat, why don't you raise your hand if you have a question that he can call on you?
Well, no, we'll wait, we'll wait for the...
Does that work?
I'm gonna finish up the remarks, and then we'll go.
Okay, but let him finish. Put your hands...
All right, I want to go through this very slowly and carefully, so everyone understands the facts, then you can have a debate on the facts. Pre-existing and the getting out of regs, the states cannot opt out. That has to, first of all, the state will choose, right, whether they want to opt out, so that has to go through the delegates, the senators, and the governor of any state. So that's issue number one. Issue number two, we're only talking pre-existing... That exception only applies to people on the individual market. That is 11 million people in total. Everything I'm telling you, you may disagree with me on policy, but on the facts, you'll see, I tell you the truth the best I can every time. The bill we're talking about, we're only talking about pre-existing conditions and the regs for 11 million people in the Obamacare individual market. Secondly, all the regs you're talking about only apply to people who lose their coverage. Under our bill, if you lose coverage, then the regs talk... But that only lasts for one year, there's a 30% penalty, and so now we're down to 11 million, and of the 11 million, only the states that apply, and then to the states that apply, only individuals that lose coverage, and then on top of that, we funded $120 billion for people in high-risk pools for these folks with pre-existing conditions. And on top of that, we added $20 billion following the Susan Collins model for the invisible risk pools for people with pre-existing conditions. And on top of that, the last few days, and this is one of the reasons there's not a CBO score, I agree with all of you on that, we should add a CBO score on that issue, I agree with you on that issue, we added another $8 billion people just for the very few people we're talking about that fall into this category. So if you wanted to debate other issues, that's good, but on the pre-existing, I think all the bases are covered, and I just covered it in detail. And I'll add one other, one other data point. Under Obamacare, under President Obama, pre-existing conditions were covered with very extensive funding, coverage, et cetera, only 115,000 people in the entire country signed up for that. So we have $120 billion plus $20 billion plus $8 billion to cover what I'm describing, which is 11 million, only the states that opt out, only the people that lose insurance for one year, and all the coverage we just mentioned. And so on that provision, people are covered. All right, and so if... I'll take question after question after question on the CBO score or anything else, but I wanted to put that out there, allow it to click, because that's taking up all the media attention, and there's just been misinformation reported on that one. All right, and so with that, I wanted to lay that one out. Let me add one other thing. I know all of you care about the kids out there and the young generation. How many lobbyists do they have in DC? None. So let me give you the context here on the federal government performance in general. This is why my solutions, I'm trying to do the right thing to get coverage for people, but I want it down at the state level where you have representatives like Senator Chase. Let me give you a few facts and figures, and then we'll go launch into questions. Right now, we have $100 trillion with a T, $100 trillion in unfunded liabilities for what? Medicare, Social Security, Medicaid, the Bush prescription drug plan, and interest on the debt. That's $100 trillion in promises to pay to the next generation they're not gonna get. On top of that, we have $20 trillion in debt we're passing on to the next generation as well. And so how is the federal government doing managing the programs you hold dear? Medicare and Social Security are insolvent in 2034. All right, and now, so I want to get to the upset. Are you upset that they're insolvent? All right, and so I, we met with a comptroller of the United States a couple weeks ago, and I asked him, what for a 20-year-old graduating from high school, can you please put together what their retirement looks like in 50 years, when they retire? And the answer is, what do you think, and I taught college economics for 20 years, what do you think my own... Bingo! All right, good, I knew that one. Come on, that's all right. That's a fun, I like that. I'm trying to win you over to our side. Bernie Sanders and Elizabeth Warren ran on what? Draining the swamp of the federal government and the special interests in DC. In the last 20 years, let me be bipartisan here, in the last 20 years, what's happened to banking? Do we have a lot of small banks coming into business, or just a few big banks on Wall Street? Let me ask you on health insurance, are there a lot of small health insurance companies, or they're just a few giant health insurance companies? That is the source of your unease with what's going on in DC. With that, how is the free market gonna change that? All right, let's go to questions, and we'll start with that. Who's got them?
Let's go to the questions. You have the questions. Okay.
Thank you. You actually, we got through some of it, very good, thank you. I'm gonna try to give you win-wins tonight. We got win-wins in policy too often in DC. Everyone looks at DC because of the broken politics and the anger across the country right now. Too many people are ticked off because they think it's a zero-sum game. Either I get it, or you get it. If we don't get over that, if we keep shouting at each other like this, you will not hear any solutions, and no solutions will emerge. So the people that are yelling are not helping get to solutions. If you want to find win-win solutions, that's why I'm here tonight. We need to get to win-win, and there are. There are... Policy positions with enhanced coverage and reduced price, that's a win-win. Let's go that route. I'm listening. I'm gonna read your questions, and I hope they're informative so we can make some progress instead of the constant yelling. Let's go. What do we got? Wendy, fire away.
Okay, this is for Congressman Brat. Could you clearly define pre-existing as it is understood within the recently House-passed bill? Are they our definitions?
Yeah, and so that's what I just tried to lay out in detail, is coverage or pre-existing conditions. There are millions and millions and... There are millions and millions and millions of people with pre-existing conditions. If you're on Medicaid, you're covered. If you're on Medicare, pre-existing... Now, look, these are facts. I'm not, if you want to yell me down, and I can't engage in the answer to the questions, if you are one of 175 million people in the country who get employer-provided healthcare, pre-existing conditions don't change. Medicaid, they don't change. All the pre-existing conditions that are in Title I, it would take me an hour to go through the list, right? So you all know the bill, right? It's Title I, the essential health benefits, it's a huge list. No one's denying that. I'm saying, a lot of people are hyped up because of the misinformation coming out of the press. If you're covered under Medicare, no change. Medicaid, pre-existing, covered. 175 million people, employer-provided, S-Chip for the kids, no change. I just went over the only change. The only change is 11 million people, and only the states that opt out, and only the person that changes their coverage, and all the money to cover those folks without coverage. And so that's the best I can do for you on that one. Wendy?
Okay, Congressman Brat, how do you justify the Medicaid cuts to special needs children in the schools? How do you anticipate these children developing the skills to function in society?
Right, good. Same logic as everything. I want that Medicaid money, the same amount of money, and I did not write the bill. I think, as you all know, I had difficulties with a lot of the bill. All right, let me get to the Medicaid issue. Medicaid, under our bill, will continue to go up at the rate of inflation. So it's cut from the DC baseline, that is true, but Medicaid will still grow at the rate of inflation. Now, what's the good news? The good news is the economic evidence on Medicaid isn't too good, and so we're gonna improve the system by returning block funds to who? To the state, and guess what? I, I think you're a little hasty on that one. We have a person down here, John Shinholzer, who works on the opioid issue, et cetera. I think they would like to see that money block granted, so that some of it can go into their programs down here at the state and local level, because they know best how to deal with it, instead of bouncing through the federal programs. You can ask him, you can ask Sheriff Carl Leonard, who works directly with addicts in the prison, he's doing the Lord's work. It's a phenomenal program, and I think those are the better ways to actually help people, and if you differ on policy, that's okay, but I honestly believe that's a better way to go.
When? This is for Congressman Brat. When?
Well, let's wait a little bit for a little quiet, so we can hear from Wendy.
Okay, we're gonna continue whenever it's quiet, and so everybody can hear. Whenever you're quiet, we'll begin again. We will answer the questions when everyone is quiet.
Okay, we have a lot of questions to get to.
We, we have an hour and a half to get through as many questions as possible, so if the people that are yelling are gonna keep other constituents from hearing, I urge you others to do what you can to bring a little rational discourse.
Okay, next question. When will Congress pass a real budget?
Please sit down. Listen, I understand, I have, I have, I, ma'am, I'm talking. I have a friend with a special needs kid as well. We all do. When they're quiet, you can turn your head. Ma'am, you're holding up the town hall. These two ladies, if you'd like to be quiet, we'll continue the town hall. We'll continue the town hall when you all are quiet. Uh, 22:07. Okay, thank you.
Congressman Brat, when will Congress pass a real budget? CRs are not a budget. I think if people would stop yelling, you might be able to hear me a little bit better. When will Congress pass a real budget? CRs are not a budget. I would be fired if I never turned in a budget.
Very good, I agree with you 100%. Whoever wrote the question, that's on the money. I was just out at the Norfolk Naval Yard with the head of the Atlantic Command, and the military, I don't know if you know all these technical... The budget refers to 12 appropriations bills. If you do a CR, that just reverts to last year's policy, so then you don't get any new policy changes in. The Defense Department right now is dealing with North Korea, China, Russia, Iran, ISIS, et cetera, right? So the military needs some flexibility, and if you go with last year's budget and keep it frozen as is, none of the technology changes, none of the ships change, none of the training changes, none of the implementing law goes into effect. So that's just one example, but that question has it right on the head. We just ended up passing a budget. It's a four-month budget that does fund the 12 appropriations bills. Yeah, that was, that was a budget. We did a CR for one week, there was some confusion on that. There was a one-week CR, and then we did the full budget afterward for four months. That budget, I voted against. It was not fiscally responsible, in my view. It didn't do what we're, we're talking about here tonight. It didn't hit a lot of the priorities I wanted to see in it. I couldn't be more in favor of doing a real budget, and on the budgeting side, I'm on the budget committee, and the main issue, of course, every year after every year, is last year, under Republican leadership, we had a $600 billion deficit. Who's that deficit going to? It's going to the kids. On tax cuts, that's a real issue. If those add to the deficit, we're gonna have some serious issues in DC, and there's every sign that that will. All right, so back on the, the most important piece on the budget, and this, the federal government is insolvent, if I haven't gotten that point through. So why is that? The Fed, the Federal Reserve Bank has kept interest rates at near zero for a long period of time now. Senior citizens getting how much interest rate on all their retirement funds? Not much. The economy's not healed. Last quarter, we grew at 0.7%. Your kids will enter that economy. So the budget has a huge impact, the huge debt. When interest rates go back up to normal, 3% or 4%, the interest costs on this country will be staggering, on top of the $20 trillion, on top of the 100 trillion in unfunded liabilities, and so I, I don't know how I can answer it any more clearly than what I'm trying to do. And so the, so the, I, I hear a million questions. We try to set this up to get through questions in a civil way. We're random from the folks in the room, and so we're happy to move on to the next one, once I finish answering this one. And, read the question again, Wendy, to make sure I answer the question thoroughly. What, why not do a budget instead of a CR? I said, I disagree with the CR logic. I don't like it. We should be doing full budgets. They should be transparent, like Senator Chase said to the American people. Every step of that should be transparent. For the last four years, what happened? We did omnibuses, chromobuses, et cetera, a week before... Okay, so people can't hear while you're yelling, I just have to repeat the same thing, okay, and I'm... I'm gonna answer the question, and if you want, I'll just answer the question, and as soon as we get some silence, I'll finish answering the question. Right, so for the last five years, I've been very clear in the newspaper, with the media, with everybody, exactly how the budget process would unfold. I was correct on all those. We got a chromibus, omnibus, right before Christmas every year. I explained exactly why that does happen. When you got Trump and Bernie Sanders in agreement that you better clean the swamp, I suggest that everybody doesn't... I know, I, there's a, I, there's a key opportunity for us to work together, and you boo on the key opportunity to drain the federal swamp. And so I'm, I know, so there's your opportunity for civil discourse, and everybody says, work across the aisle. I'm working across the aisle, and it's loud right now. Next question.
Why do you think it is not important for citizens to see the president's tax returns?
Good, here we go. She's gonna read it again. I missed the first part.
Why do you think it is not important for citizens to see the president's tax returns?
The premise of the question is wrong. I do think it is important for citizens to see the tax. My, my votes on, we've had, I mean, you guys are creative, I'll give you that. All right, we haven't had any votes on that one, but I give you an A+ for creativity. We don't vote on that issue. It's not a matter of law. There are conflicts of interest coming out by the day, having to do with Russia, with China, with Iran, with elites all over this country. I want more transparency on all of it. So I, I, I agree with you. I want transparency. It's not a matter of law, so he doesn't have to turn it over, but I, I agree with the premise of the question. Go ahead.
Being an economist, how could you vote on AHCA without a CBO score?
All right, I'm gonna give you bingo. Being an economist that went to Princeton Seminary that believes in the Constitution, who's got bingo out there? Anybody yet? Bingo, good. All right, bingo, boom, you set that one up, whoever asked the question. All right, I do like the fun. I wish this could just be fun like that, it's kind of fun, right? So being an economist, why vote for the CBO? Because the first CBO is the 200 pages of the bill that bounce into 3,000 pages of the Obamacare bill. And so the answer to the question is, there's three amendments. I showed you one of them. It's two pages long. So if, if you have disagreements on the policy, I totally understand that. That's fine, it's a democracy, right? Good. I'm hearing disagreement. Not everybody agrees with me, right? But on the CBO score, there's three amendments that were added. Most of them are two or three pages in length. You can read them in five seconds. They all move things in a favorable direction to people in this room, and they have an, they have an insignificant impact on the first CBO score. It's, well, just, you just read the three amendments, and you'll see them, right? One's an $8 billion addition by Fred Upton to provide for those people with pre-existing conditions. I assume you're all in favor of that. Right? And on and on. So the CBO score would only get more favorable, in your view, so if you hate the first CBO score, that's enough. You can just disagree with it on that basis, and that's fine with me, right? It's a lie that you can, no, that's not a lie. All right, go.
If you would have been present to vote to raise the debt ceiling to pass the continuing resolution, how would you have voted?
How would I have voted on the one-week CR? I would have voted yes.
Since you campaigned to enact term limits, and as of today, no legislation has been passed, how many terms will you limit yourself to?
Good question. I've already limited myself to six terms, 12 years at the onset. I ran with Trump and Bernie Sanders and Elizabeth Warren on cleaning the swamp. I live up to my hype, and if I say I believe in term limits, I'm term limiting myself. I put in a bill, it got 60 votes. And I'll just tell you, on the other side of the aisle, there's not a whole lot of action for term limits either, just so you know how it works in DC. So the swamp is bipartisan. I see a couple Democratic heads nodding for me. I about had heart palpitations, but that's good news, right? I put in a balanced budget amendment, that got about 60 signatures, bipartisan. I put in the term limit bill, and we're trying, and so that's what I'm saying. If you want heat on that issue, bring it on. I put in the bill, the rest of the House doesn't sign on. That's the best you can do.
And I'm gonna add to that, I actually introduced the term limit bill in the State Senate.
Good, very good.
Why do you believe healthcare should be left to market forces?
Uh, because market forces are what made us the richest nation on the face of the earth, number one. But I, I don't believe that. I don't believe that, and no one, if you're, if you'll pay attention to what I've said all night, pre-existing conditions is in the bill. Right? The safety net is still in the bill. Medicaid still stands. Education funding for kids with disabilities hasn't changed. Medicare hasn't changed. And so, what's the question again, Wendy? And so, what's the question again, Wendy? Nope, none of those are lies. Sorry about that.
Why do you believe healthcare should be left to market forces?
Right. So the problem in the country right now is there are very few free-market forces at all at work. If you build a house today, how many people can, if you're, all right, let's get, test the A student in the front row who's yelling. Can you name me one part of a house, when you build a house with 10,000 parts, one part of a house that's not regulated? Didn't think so. Cars, houses, healthcare, the economy's growing at 0.7%. So you're saying, I'm pure free market? In my dreams, I'm pure free market. I wish we had any free markets. When it comes to trade, Trump and Bernie and Elizabeth, and everybody agrees, we want to have free markets in this country before you allow the rest of the world to compete against us and clean our clock. We don't have free markets. We have regulations in this country that are keeping the job market and the middle class from getting jobs. So Trump won in Michigan, Ohio, what are the other states? The Midwest, Michigan, Ohio, Pennsylvania, et cetera, on the jobs question. The Democrats will win again as soon as they hit the middle class and the job creation, and I want you to do that, because then we're all on the same team. Go ahead.
With today's firing of James Comey, will you advocate for a special prosecutor to investigate Trump's ties to Russia? Trump's ties to Russia?
Yeah, we have oversight committees in the House, in the Senate. They're working their course. So far, all right, let me see who the genius in the room is here. Who's got, who can, here's the, I'll make an exception, give me the evidence of Trump collusion in the Russia and the investigation. Right? And so far, they, I've heard the ACLU is here, and liberals, of which I'm one of you, I'm a classical liberal that believes in all liberal values, believe it or not, I, you disagree, well, you're free to disagree, that's okay. I'm a classical liberal too, and in this country, you're innocent until there's evidence. So before you go after someone, and this applies to all of you, right? No one wants the federal government coming after you unless there is evidence. And no one can stand up and give me the evidence. And so we will pursue oversight until the evidence, when the evidence comes in on the unmasking, there is evidence coming in, and we're getting it. Good. Next one.
All right.
You're free to disagree, but that's my position.
Okay, this question is for Senator Chase.
I have a question, hold on.